I'm gonna call a meeting to order and I'm gonna ask Dr. Terry if he will to this, this leader for tonight. This is Bob, please. Well, we come to you today asking you for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we began this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion. Also, Lord, help us to grow closer as a group to continue to do our business as the college. Fill us with your grace. Continue to make us discuss and help us discuss our business affect the students, the staff, our alumni, and the friends of the college. And continue to remind us that all we do here will help us to accomplish the truth for the greater glory of you. Lord, we pray all of these prayers in your name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Before we go into our meeting tonight, I'm gonna ask Dr. Jerry if he will to explain to us, tell us how you do speed dial on your phone. Video, speed video on the phone.
I have been lectured about that from my wife for about the last three days, so I still don't know the difference between that video and a picture, but I think I need to learn.
For those of you who may not know what I'm, what we're talking about, he was in
Utah.
Utah.
And football game.
And, and he was out on his patio and he was making picture of the buildings and everything, the scenery, and it just flashed by you, you couldn't see it.
And I sent it to my wife, and I sent it to y'all, you guys. And both of you told me that I did it wrong, so. And my wife continues telling me that.
Okay, the first item of business tonight is we, I have to call a a meeting of, a hearing for the open for the tax regular, uh, rate. And so I'm opening a meeting for the tax, for a hearing on the Paul's tax rate of zero point one one five four nine zero for the Redder Tax District and zero point zero four seven six zero for the Palestine Branch Campus Maintenance Tax District as the tax rates to support the physical year twenty two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. So I'll hear motion, we going to open, I have a hearing.
You just opened, you just opened.
Okay, okay, I'm opening a hearing for the tax discussion, uh, public discussion. Is there any, anyone have anything to say or? If not, I'll close that meeting. And we need to have two motions covering the action that we took in those hearings, in that hearing. And the first one is, I just need you want to board to read this?
You can, yeah, that would be, that would be a motion to do that.
Okay, okay. Do I hear a motion that we, okay.
Chairman, I move that property tax rate be increased for adoption of tax rate point one one five four nine zero, which is effectively an eight point seven two percent increase in tax.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Jerry Stone seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, now for the Palestine.
Right, we need a second motion.
We need a second motion for the Palestine Branch Campus Maintenance District. Steve, you make up motion.
I move that property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one oh four seven six zero, which is effectively an eight point five six percent increase in the tax rate.
All right, I hear second.
Second.
Doctor. Clayton seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Okay, very good.
So that concludes our public hearing for the, on tax increase for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. All right, we'll move right along. Uh, and item number.
Six. President's report.
What?
Number six, President's report.
No, okay, yeah, we'll move down to President's Report, number six. Mr. President.
I'm, I'm gonna let Dr. Spazera, she handed out earlier, I think, some information on our fall enrollment. I'm gonna go ahead and let her have some opportunity to speak on that.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. If you look at the first page, and if you look, I'm sorry, I forgot to change the word spring to fall. This is the fall enrollment report. And so I want to point out that we are still registering for eight week two. And so what you're gonna see here, we will continue to increase on that. But from, I went ahead and did three years back, but you can see that we are up in almost all of our categories with the exception of Health Science Center. And there's a variety of reasons in why we're low. One of those being that we just, we were not able to find a paramedic in EMS instructor at time. So we had to move those programs to the spring semester, a spring start date. And then we're also seeing just a handful of drop in enrollment across the health science programs as a whole. And specifically, if you look at our ADN program, our sophomore class for the ADN is, is holding steady. But what we're seeing with our freshmen is not the same population of interest in the working programs for our students, so we're, we're focusing on recruitment there. If you look at dual credit, it does appear that dual credit is down. But if you, again, remember the multiple locations means that students are sitting in two different locations, so they, they could be a dual credit student taking class at a high school, but they're also enrolled in an online, so they would be falling under that multiple category. At this point, if you compare fall twenty-one to where we are in fall twenty-two, we're showing a two point four percent increase in enrollment. And like I said, we still got eight weeks two going up as well. And then the one thing I wanted to point out is, in all of our enrollment reports that we've, that we've done for the past three years, and we have focused on credit programs only. And as y'all know, we've talked a lot about TDCJ, the in-service, pre-service, core reporting, some of those programs. So I wanted to also provide some numbers based on where we are with that. And again, it's, this is for fall, fall twenty-two, and then what we call cycle one or quarter one enrollment. So it, it is not historical, so it's only what we're currently in. But if you add those in, we're sitting at five thousand eight hundred and sixty-four students. And if you look at our contact hours, we're at three million three hundred and, close to three hundred and forty thousand contact hours. And we are currently in account year, so that's, that's great news for us. We're continuing, we'll have another cycle, cycle two that will come out that we will also enroll in. So basically, in, at the October board meeting, we'll be able to give a firm, this is where we landed for the fall semester.
We, we are hoping and we believe it'll be close to six thousand students.
That is our goal.
It's been our goal all along, so we think that we'll probably be there after second eight weeks and after the, the next cycle of the TDCJ programs, non-credit programs, or inclusion. I'm just glad to be up, there's a lot of colleges that are two point four percent. There's a lot of colleges that are not up, that, they're still struggling. So I think we're doing something good there. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Spazera?
Just curious, do you hear what we see at twenty percent off?
I think that part of it again is that the loss of the instructor for paramedic and EMS, that, that takes about twenty to twenty-five students. And you're talking about seventy-five students being down. And then also, we, we are still two faculty short and from where we are to be fully staffed, and that affects our clinical sites as well. So when we're looking at being able to put, put students out into the healthcare through their clinicals, we're not able to, to place them as much because of the fact that we don't have faculty to supervise them. But ultimately, what the biggest hit was in that freshman ADN program. And our BSN program is full. Uh, farm tech, we're down about five students, Jason told me earlier today. Vocational nursing in Palestine, we're down a few students there as well. But it's the freshman, it's the incoming freshman class. And one of the things we've done, Mary Helen and our staff, who's our dual credit director, has gone out and talked with the high schools about what their interest is and what the program interests are. And health science has dropped from one of their top interests. So Jason Smith and some of his coordinators along with Mary Helen, what they're doing is going back out to the high schools, starting another rotation with them to gain up interest. We have, I was so lucky earlier today, we have high schools that are very interested in partnering with us on programs such as EMS, EMT, paramedic. It's the logistics of figuring out how to get those high schoolers to our facility in Carroll to be able to offer those programs, because most of the high schools don't have the facilities in order to run those programs. And then there, we also, we're seeing a lot of interest in things like sonography, radiology, which are programs that we don't currently have. So we're working on writing grants to help us with the, with the equipment.
What, what do you consider, asking me, wait, what was max now? I figure, what is the number?
Um, to be, okay, when you say max, not giving me with our current programs?
I'm not sure what I mean. You said, okay, I'm, uh, Cheryl. How many, and the programs were exactly what they needed to be? How many do you think that you could put, put, put on the, on the ground in here? That's kind of what I drive at. We have a lot of space, a lot of investment space. So in the first quarter, if you said, okay, I can design programs, we have people coming to see, how many would you be able to?
I was, I was saying, if we did consider doing night classes and weekend classes as well, we could get close to five hundred students in there. But again, I think we have to be, we have to be strategic about the programs that we're putting in there and make sure that we're staying with the trends for what the students are wanting.
So you have capacity depending on the arrangement, design of programs to develop it? With the self, you begin?
Right.
It's gonna be all.
David, one of the problems that we have is faculty. This, the state requires, the, the nursing requires a certain number of faculty per student. And a problem is not necessarily the facility, it's the number of faculty. We have to hire new faculty. And we, as she just mentioned, we, we couldn't hire faculty this summer. We had open, open applications that we probably, we didn't have anybody apply. And we lost our EM, she, she mentioned we didn't have an EMT class. We lost our EMT instructor about two weeks before the semester started. And we couldn't, didn't have time to hire them. And so it's, it's not necessarily the facility, but it's also the, the clinical space. Because of COVID, we couldn't get into the hospitals, and we still can't get into some of the hospitals. And so each one of these students that she's talking about in the ADN program has to go out into clinical, into hospital. And so that was a problem as well. So space is a problem, space is not a problem. The problem is really faculty, facilities, not, not, not in-house facilities, but clinical facilities. And, uh.
Well, honestly, a lot of our students are telling us that they're, they're hesitant to come into the nursing field because of their, they don't want to do the, the COVID vaccinations. And right now, it's still a requirement for them to go out into the facility. So there's, that's been some hesitation on the student's part as well.
There's some challenges, and again, my opinion is that facility will be full. It's just a matter of time and go working its way through, but it will be full in three, four, five years. The need for health science is never, not gonna go away. As we get older, it's gonna get more severe. And the COVID's been a big factor, I mean, honestly, I'm, I'm hearing from Helen Reed and Jason and the others that people don't want to go into hospitals anymore and work. Doesn't matter how much you pay them necessarily. Well, that may be the case as well. I, I don't disagree with that as well, but, you know, these people could go out and make sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year right out of our program. And that's, that's not enticing them anymore like it used to. So we could go on, and maybe we will at some point give you a summary of, of the problems or the concerns that we have with, with health science faculty, etc. Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
I've got one question, man, I know. Man, we have our experience with the power. Has a lot of the same things we do. They have experienced, uh, personnel issues like we are and.
So I, I did ask that question earlier today of Jason, if he said that they are struggling with faculty as well. They are also seeing a decline in their, in their ADN program. Uh, what's helping them is they're seeing an influx in their radiology, sonography, and all of this, that, those programs.
And our next, our goal is to put in a radiology, sonography, sonography first, and then radiology program. And it has from the very beginning, when we first moved in. We have a space dedicated for that program, which was the old X-ray facility that was in the hospital before, and still there. And so that, that's a goal. COVID kind of put us on hold.
Is pharmacy tech program doing what you think it should be?
This semester, we're about, we're about four students down from being at capacity. So I think that the two instructors are working really hard to get the information out there and to gain the momentum. We, we actually did see a bit of an, an increase from last fall to this fall. We're just, we were hoping to be at capacity.
Good question.
It's the same question, the same issue of they still have to do their clinical hours now that, or they have to go out to the pharmacies and work. So a lot of our, you know, we, we tried to do this with the dual credit program in the, I looked at Kelly, and she was the one in the, in that office at that time. The number of hours that the students have to perform in, for farm tech, it's just, it's challenging for them, if they're doing something else.
Okay, the other, I was gonna mention, the next board meeting will be the, will be the fourth Monday in September, which is the twenty-sixth. And I also want to update you on Northwest Dorm. Uh, it was completed on time a couple of weeks ago. The, the, they've moved into it, and everything seems to be working very well. The air conditioning, the, the heating, the, the water, just everything seems to be doing it the way it's supposed to be doing. We've had a few little hiccups, but it's small, it wasn't anything big. So I'm hearing good things from the players, I'm hearing good things from the coaches. I was with them all, all the end of last week, and they said good things. Uh, there's a few things left to do. I think the meeting room that we talked about at the very end on the south side is, is, is being worked on now. I got some pictures of it today, I believe, and it's being worked on. So I'm very well pleased with where we are with it, I think they are as well. Um, at some point, if you'd like, anyone would like to take a tour, I'd be happy to give you a tour of the facility. It looks like, when you walk inside the, the, one of the rooms, it looks brand new. What do you think, Mike?
It looks brand new.
It looks, it, it looks brand new, looks like a brand new facility. We still got a little bit of work to do on the outside, we want to do some work on the sidewalks. We want to do some work on the painting, the little square where the, where the HVAC was, we want to do some work with that as well. I don't think it's been done yet. Okay, we want to do some work on that, we still got some final finishes to do. But overall, I'm very pleased and very appreciative to the Board of Trustees for letting us do that, because I think what we've got now is a new dorm, practically a new dorm with a capacity of a hundred and two, a hundred and three, hundred and four students. Uh, that would have cost probably fifty or sixteen million dollars to do if we didn't went out and built it. And so now we got it, we've got a new dorm for two million dollars approximately. So thank you for doing that. I think that was looking down the road in a positive way. And we also have about a little over four hundred students indoors, is that still correct?
Just over four hundred, and we have not been that high since, I think, two thousand fourteen. So, and we'll probably lose a couple more before, before the final numbers come out. But that, but this is good, this is good.
So our dorm, our dorm capacity has increased, and so that was another reason why we wanted to open that dorm to be able to have room for growth. And I believe you're gonna see that, so I appreciate that very much. And that's all that I have.
All right, move out of number seven. We need to approve the July the twenty-fifth to August the fifteenth special meeting. Uh, do I hear a motion that there'd be approved? Mike makes up motion. Ron seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item number eight, consider business financial investment report for June of two thousand twenty-two.
David, I think is on the Zoom meeting, David, you wanna kind of take over from here?
Sure, I'll, I'll be very brief before I lose my voice.
David, we can't hear you, I don't know, we need to increase our volume?
Can y'all, can you hear me?
Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you now. We have Stephanie here, so if we need some help, we call them, Stephanie.
Well, yeah, if I fade out, she can take over. Uh, just real briefly, uh, talk mainly about revenue. Uh, we're gonna run a little short of the budget on tuition, I think, looking at July preliminaries. Eleven point nine versus a budget of a little over twelve. Uh, the good news is that on housing, food service, we've already exceeded budget. Uh, looking at the bookstore in August, I think we're gonna come close to making that. Uh, state appropriations is down, I know that's a broken record. Uh, ad war taxes is up. But, uh, and we have booked, and I'll talk about this in, um, the, uh, HRF, but we booked fall and spring lost revenue. In July, you will see the contact hour loss for the year. Uh, that lost revenue will show up. And, uh, I didn't really have anything on expenses. Uh, equipment is higher than last year, but again, we've mentioned that as far as uh, the Mars grant, we had a lot of supply chain issues where we increased that budget, so you see some expenditures coming this year that were really scheduled for last year. Bottom line there, you see that we're eleven point four million revenue over expense compared to eleven point seven last year. Again, that's not unusual this time of year, most of your revenue has come in. Uh, and so you've got a couple of months here where, you know, you're, you're still paying bills, paying employees, and, and I think we're gonna have a good amount of money left over, you know? We're, we're budgeted to have almost five. So, uh, I think we're in good shape there. The, uh, just real briefly, again, before I lose my voice, the, as usual, we're in a good cash position, we'll scroll down about two pages. Yeah, we have thirty million there in total. Uh, next page on, on investments. Y'all still hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, twenty-three, seven in your cap reserve. Uh, next page. Yeah, let's go on down to the capital reserve summary. And I did, since y'all were talking about Northwest Dorm, you're gonna see both on this sheet. Uh, Jennifer keeps up with this, and we'll be bringing you, these projects complete. What I'd like to do is, is we have done in the past, is bring you a summary of saying, okay, here's the project is finished, this was the total cost, kind of, you know, give you a summary. We'll do that for the, the parking lot and the Northwest Dorm, you know, as we, we get all those things in. And the last sheet is, uh, the over twenty-five thousand, I wanted to see if anybody had any questions about that. You see, you can see some, some Northwest Dorm expenses in there, various things like that. And I'm only gonna go over a couple of pages on HRF, because we're coming down to the end of that. Uh, this first one, the one million, one forty-nine, it's a little less than what we budgeted. We had a couple of expenses that we hadn't drawn down that we, that we didn't know about. That's the amount of money we've got left. And so on the next page, uh, I want to show you the eight man, four eighty-four that we've spent, and this is again institutional, not the student side, that money's all gone. We've got the million, six sixty down at the bottom, and the million, eight fifty-five for lost revenue this year. And, um, you'll see those, uh, both in the financial statements. And, uh, the only piece that'll be left, uh, the intent is to use it for contact hours next year, that's what's part of the budget. And I think I'll stop there before I can't speak. I try to answer any question.
Anybody have any questions for David? Are you feeling better, David?
Yeah, I feel better than I sound, believe it or not.
David's got COVID. He got COVID.
All right, any discussion? If not all, and they, or I hear a motion, we approve the, uh, finance investment report for twenty twenty-two. Uh, Jerry Stone makes that motion, Terry second, Dr. Terry seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, item number nine. Uh, we need to appoint a, a committee, and I'm thinking that we'd need four people on the search committee. And do I have volunteers that, uh, would like to serve on that? Okay, Steve and David. Steve, David, and Mike, and Terry. Sound all right with everybody? Everybody willing to say?
Let me, let me say, Lewis, it's gonna take a lot of time.
Yeah, it's gonna be time consuming.
Day as well, so I, it's up to you. But I just need, need for everybody to know, it's gonna be, there'll be some time, it'll take a lot, a lot of meetings.
Okay, but if you four are in agreement, well, do I hear a motion that the, we appoint these four to the search committee? Okay, Jerry Stone makes motion, we'll appoint them to the committee. And Ron Day seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item number.
Let me stop you right there, I think, I think almost everybody, Janine's put together some information for you, I want you to be able to look over that information.
I haven't.
Have you given it to them yet?
No, because I didn't.
Okay, Janine's gonna, Norma's gonna give the committee this information, she's put together a good uh, information about potential search. I've also been contacted by ACC, and I want to talk to you on the committee about that as well. But, um, what we'll do is we'll have a meeting in the next, I think, uh, next week or week after next. And we'll talk about where we want to go from here, and you can look over some of this information, and then we'll talk. Okay? Good.
Good. Good. All right, moving right along. Consider and discuss the twenty-two, twenty-three audit, continuing education schedule and associated fees.
This is something we do every year, and, um, Chris Hicks is here, has anybody, has any questions about this? But we asked the board to approve the handbook that will be provided for, um, adult and continuing education and the fees that are presented. Anybody has any questions? We'll ask for a motion to do that.
All right, I hear a motion, we approve that.
So.
Okay, Dr. Clayton makes a motion, and Dr. Terry seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item number eleven, consider and discuss air mark, door, camp, and summer board rates for physical twenty-two and twenty-three.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Parnell to, to discuss that, and I'm gonna ask you to explain what a door rate is, right up, right up front. I've been asked twice.
A door rate is someone who walks in off the street and says, I want to have dinner with you. And they don't have a meal plan, and they don't typically come, and they're just that one time off, and that's called door rate. Typically, the door rates are much more expensive than the meal plan costs are, because it's a one time. Um, and, and thank you, Mr. President. Y'all apologize first, because several months back, you approved a, I think, a fourteen point seven five percent increase for air mark for their meal plans over the last two years. And we should have included these in that same plan, because it's all part of the same thing. And, and we, and my, my, my being new here, basically kept us from doing that. Moving forward, you'll see all those in one, one, at one time, so we'll have a little only once. But what we're asking tonight is to take these particular rates and raise them by the same level that you raised the, the meal plan rates at fourteen point seven five over the last two years. Just a little bit of background, these rates haven't been changed in at least three years. Um, and you probably know that, because we talked about that with the other rates, with COVID, no one really wanted to raise the rates. But it's time now, and air market suffered a, a little bit because of COVID and because of these, we haven't been able to raise the rates. So we are. So we are asking that you approve raising all of the rates by that same fourteen point seven five percent that you approved for the general meal plans.
Just ask the motion for that, for that rate increase.
All right, I hear a motion. Mike makes a motion. Dr. Clayton seconds a motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. Now, what, that's to cover the cost of the food stuff?
When they go in to eat, eat a meal, if they go in just off the street, just go in for one time, that's what they will pay for that. In other words, if you wanted to walk over and just buy something in airmark, go in and eat, then you would pay that.
Okay, okay. All right, number twelve, consider and discuss the approval of auto liability and property insurance coverage.
There's a lot of narrative about that, and we've got Brenda here today from Hibs Hallmark Company to help us as well. And I know David's still on the Zoom meeting. He's been working with Brenda on this as well. But David, do you want to go ahead and talk about this?
Well, I'll, I'll let Brenda start, but then, you know, we'll, we'll talk about the recommendation when she gets through.
Okay, Brenda?
Sure, I'll be right back.
Okay.
I'll just stand up so you can see me a little bit. So this year, y'all, y'all have experienced a couple of things. In January, February, the Public Educators Association of Texas hired and paid for appraisal services on all of their schools. And the main reason for that is the concern about the rising construction costs. And what they realized is that if they didn't do that, you, you, a school district or a college would find yourself underinsured. And so from that, we looked at the current appraisal, current values that we had, and then the appraisal values, and chose to make some adjustments. We had two options to do that. One was to go full value of the appraisal values, go in and jump them all up to a hundred percent of the appraisal value. Or the second thing that we could do is take advantage of what's called a margin clause within, within the policy. And what that says is whatever stated for the value of the building or the value of the contents, they're going to pay up to twenty-five percent more of that stated amount. So I think David and I talked about it quite a bit, you know, it certainly is up for discussion here. But there is definitely, I think the values increased with the margin clause option, it increased about eleven million dollars. So we had several buildings that were not adequately insured. And that was taking, that was taken into consideration, using that extra twenty-five percent. I can keep going, but I want to answer any questions about that first.
I've worked, I've worked several years with every year.
We did.
Insurance has always responded to any inquiry, so that's kind of all the insurance company to ask their questions and be content rather than years later, and they're screaming fifty percent, and so we all have an updated year values in several years. As you know, having represented us all that time, we have always provided everything that's ever been requested. So just a little-
Well, Chris, I mean, every year I made, particularly with this intelligent man, we talk about those values. So we have done increases. What you're experiencing is a major increase in construction cost. And so when they did the appraisal, we were right in the middle of all of the construction costs going up horribly. And so what you're experiencing here is appraisal based on those new construction costs. I pray that some of that would go backwards. I really do. And we're able to drop those values back down, but we just didn't feel like it was a risk that needed to be taken. And on top of that, there was an increase in the property rates, which is pretty universal in the programs that are out there. All of the programs have taken a hit primarily from that winter storm, but wind and hail has hit several campuses. And so it's, the losses in Texas are just, you know, pretty crazy right now. And it's whether it's a college or a school or a normal business, property rates are just continuing to go up.
What about TDCC losses?
I mean, really, we're really good. I don't, I don't have my loss summary with me, but-
No, that is okay. I mean, you know, if it was good, bad, somewhere in-
That was good.
I understand that. So we've had, we've had a good experience, but yet the charitable money, fifty percent more coverage this year, except for cause. We said, well, we, you know, we want your buildings raised way up there.
Well, and you have every right to, you know, discuss that. You have every right to get a contract, sorry.
If you are ready, I might have to stop that.
Yes, yes. We've looked at those pretty closely. I didn't find as much discrepancy in yours. I had a couple of other plants that I thought their contents values were way off. And, but at any time, they just looked at it, and we can look at it more. Anytime, we can modify those values. So, and then you get refund of money.
Have you looked at any other carrier options?
Yes.
Are there any other options?
Yeah, there are always options, you know.
But, but I mean, to me, there are no other options unless they're economically efficient. That really was my question.
Yeah, and that's a hard one to answer. If you ask me, can we get a lower rate somewhere else? The answer is yes. Now, what, what you give up for that is substantial. And it's substantial, some of the things you give up for that lower rate, and I'll give you some examples. There's all different kinds of programs out there, which I'm very familiar with, but one example was one program out there will only pay up to a million dollars for single client inbrain groups. And that's all you're going to get. They, that program also has put some real limitations in their interlocal agreements, which, which basically says you can't consult anyone else when you have a property loss. You appoint one person at the college to manage that loss. You can't bring in a public adjuster. You can't get your attorney involved. That particular program said, we're not talking to anybody but your one person that you're calling. So what that creates is a real problem. You're basically stuck with their adjusting. And, and then there's a pill process in that program. And any litigation has to be filed in Travis County. So they, they really, really put you in a corner. And it's their way or no way. And that's what the interlocal agreement says. And, you know, there are situations, I'm not against public adjusters. I think they have their place. But there are some situations where they cause a problem with their clients, but sometimes there's clients that really need that separate public adjuster out there helping you and helping you fight for the amount of money. So-
So have we, we have taken ones from the other government?
No, in fact, David and I talked about it this, this year. We talked about that we thought next year was the year for us to do that. Now, I did, I did send it to one other program besides this one. And they, they couldn't compete. And they also do not operate under interlocal agreements. So that's a critical program that forces you to take bids every year, which can be quite complicated in time. David Hopkins and I talked about me changing my robe a little bit and becoming your risk manager next year, and going out for bids and evaluating that, and, and that's, that's what you pay me to do, to do that.
I said, this has expirations coming up pretty quick.
Yes, sir, yes.
I do appreciate the time and strength. But what I don't appreciate is the fact we've got a fifty percent increase in breakups, and we haven't, we haven't measured that against any other alternatives.
Yes, sir.
That, that's troubling. So I guess my question then goes to, to some of both of the pieces of that. Does this policy flat cancel? Because I believe with that amount of money, it should be looked at in comparison now and the next year.
Whatever you-
So what we did with this policy flat cancel, allowing us to-
You won't, I mean, you have, you have like two days. So it's effective nine-one. So it won't flat cancel, but you could cancel short, and you get a short rate penalty, but you can do that.
Well, my term is flat cancel, meaning that you pay pro rata for coverage. That's what I, what I find it.
They're, they're going to do a short rate penalty, so you'll, it'll be penalized about two percent. So when you elect to cancel midterm, there's, they use a different, it's called short rate instead of pro rata.
There's something in the law.
It was-
Yeah, we've confirmed that, because I really thought that in Texas, that, that a, a flat cancel recovery was actually a matter of law. And I'm no expert there. So I get into exactly where that motion comes from, but I don't know if you can handle that carefully.
I can, I should be able to.
That's a lot of money.
Usually the short-
It's a lot of other people's money.
Usually the pro rata happens when the insurance company answers. But when you elect to cancel, there's a, there's a penalty.
Direct personal experience contradicts that, because I have had that very scenario to flat cancel and receive the refund exactly according to, as a matter of fact, the date it's been used. And, and again, I would just like to confirm where we are with that, because I think with that amount of money, we don't want to just sit here and say, well, that's only another hundred and thirty or forty thousand dollars, you know, we're, we're washing money. Let's just go ahead. I don't care what others do, I think, because you really have to respect them. I'm going to see a host of places for that money to go than to Pete. None of this against you. You, you, you're a graduate of college. So take it away, I mean it, but you're just being correct. I think it's a common, I'm just taking it forward.
I can, I can look at that policy language and say that to David Hopkins, and then we can communicate that to y'all. And certainly, you know, whatever you want, choose to do, we can do that. Just, right now, there is no easy answer. And there's pros and cons for everyone. Now, you know, that program I mentioned to you, I think you can get lower rates, but it comes with a trade-off, so.
But unless we're able to see what those trade-offs may be.
Yes, sir.
It's impossible to judge. Maybe it's a trade-off, but you'd be comfortable. Maybe with a lot of times about, they aren't, these folks are going to two hundred and fifty thousand or one and a half, well, that's not exactly you know, great coverage for what is most likely to happen.
Right.
You're getting far less coverage in the north under the present. I just think that would-
I mean, I'm here for y'all, so whatever we need to do, just-
There's no minimum or a regular.
Yes, sir.
David, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
Well, I just, I wanted the board to know, of course, I've, I've talked to Brenda about this before, that Pete, you know, needs to, to try to get us these things earlier. You know, for this very occurrence, and we're facing, we've got to have coverage nine-one. So the board understands, I have covered in the budget the margin the, the way that they're instructed using the cheaper rates. But we were prepared for the value, the larger increase that I really didn't expect was in the rate. That, that's the largest part of the increase. But we, we've got to have coverage nine-one. I would, I understand what David's saying. I just, it's almost, we need to have insurance even if we have to cancel it, I guess, David, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I think it is. That's why I was starting to line up with, with pro rata or flat cancel and the reasons for it. It, you know, until that obviously would play into the direction that, that you take. I, I think with due toward thinking it might, then we should go ahead and take that look, allow the board to say, well, here's what it really does by way of comparison. Right now, we can't see that.
So if I understand this correctly, we need to go ahead and approve what we've got here now, and come back at the September board meeting with with some additional information, what possibilities may be, and then go from there? Sound, David?
Yes, sir. I, I believe that's kind of what we're facing. Again, Pete runs in, I, I don't know why, but they, they renew with their reinsurers at the same time that we renew, which makes it difficult to get rates out of them. Which, as you know, we have come every August, and I've been raising Cain about it every year since I've been here, so we can take a look. I, I don't know if it, if we can get it all done in thirty days, but we'll certainly try.
Okay.
Well, and David understands that you can all do it today, but also Brenda, that it's not thirty days, it's forty-five, sixty minutes. Here again, I'll predict it all here, there is a flight cancellation option, but we're going to put it in place. Still going to save a bunch of money if you decide, it's not more than it.
Well, so that's terminology, right? Flat cancellation means you took me to the bottom, and yet the next day you decided that was your one. That would be done on nine-one. That's back cancellation. If you move past nine-one, and, and you decide, and I'm looking at the wording, either come people, well, can't score a short rate. That's with a little bit of a penalty or pro rata. I'll look at the language in the policy. I don't blame you. It is a huge increase, and it's reflective of the, the property losses that are happening all over the state. And you, you know, kind of have to recognize that not that you like it, but it's a pulling your age. And so what the other schools do impacts you.
So we need a motion to approve.
Okay, Ron Day makes motion. And then come back September.
Hopefully, it's a September meeting.
Okay, Ron, Mike seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. All right. Item thirteen, consider and discuss proposal for preliminary engineering services on the Kaufman property.
As the board knows, we've been working with some concepts of what we want to do with the hundred and five acres of property that we were, we had donated to us by Mr. White. And we've been talking, Steve Grant and I have been talking, and Mike as well, have been talking with a land planner over the last three or four months. And basically, we've come to the conclusion that we have two pieces of property along Highway one seventy-five that are something that we need to investigate and determine which one of those two pieces of property would be the best to build on. You have this in front of you, and if you look at that, I think Norma's going to put it up on the screen, maybe we have, if you go see section A here, and then you'll see section B, those are two pieces of property that we're talking about. Those are the two pieces of property that the land planner has, has helped us make some decisions in terms of where, of what we may want to do in the future for that property, of being able to build potentially on the property with thirty acres, twenty-five, thirty, or thirty-five acres. So what we've done is we've talked to the land planner, and he's given us really good advice. We continue talking to him. And, but we've also got Corey Greeters here tonight, and Corey has given us a proposal, along with the land planner has been working with us as well, in terms of, of what engineering services that he could provide for us to be able to move forward with being able to determine which one of those two pieces of property, A or B, would be the, the best potentially to keep, and which of the other properties that we have of the hundred and five acres would be for sale, probably to the Kaufman Economic Development Corporation, and probably to the Kaufman Independent School District. Two people that are very interested in the property. So he has a proposal put together here for us. Emily Heglin and I went to speak with the Mar Foundation a couple of weeks ago. The Mar, and I've mentioned this in the information that I provided to you, the Mar Foundation has somewhat committed to pay for this. Uh, the Mar, and I've mentioned this in the information that I provided to you, the Mar Foundation has somewhat committed to pay for this. Um, I say somewhat committed, because once I, Corey gave me the proposal, I sent it to them, they are reviewing it and have reviewed it. And we feel very, very confident that they're going to fund this. However, even if they didn't fund it, we did put it in our budget this year for us to be able to do, uh, work on, as, as we've talked about, in determining what's the best use of this property, what's the best plan for this property. What Corey is, Corey is in the back of the room here, Corey, thank you for being here. Uh, he might want to, you may have some questions for him. Basically, we need to do a survey, a survey was never done of the property, that's part of this proposal. Um, you can see that from the, um, scope of work. And then we've got the, um, south side of the property, which is, which is the, the, um, B part of the property on the map. And it, and we talk, talk about the preliminary, um, cost that would be involved in determining kind of building that needs to be put there, parking lot, access road, driveways, utilities, water, sewer, electric, and internet. He also talks about sidewalks, landscaping, and the cost to do that on that property. He also then talks about the cost of doing, um, an, a, a proposal for the estimates for the other property, which was, we have listed as A property, which is the north side of the facility. Um, the two biggest issues, and I'm, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Al.
I was gonna say, the two biggest issues that we're running into in trying to make a determination here is, uh, access, future access, transportation access, entry and exit. Um, and also utilities, and, um, o- obviously, the to- topography, other, other types of, of in- information that we need to have provided to us. There's a lot of, of discussion that we need to have, continue having with Tech Dot, with the city of Kaufman, and with the, um, the Kaufman County. Um, as, if you've driven down Highway one seventy-five, they got a new courthouse, they're building right beside it. And they have criminal, the, uh, criminal justice center is also beside the courthouse. So, um, there's gonna be a lot of, of traffic, and there's gonna be a lot of future roads that will be built. Uh, there's even talk about, um, a service road being built along Highway one seventy-five at some point in the future. So there's just a lot of balls circling around up in the air, and we need help. Uh, we need help from the, from the, from Corey to help us make some decisions moving forward, and we need help from also the, um, the land planner. Steve's been working with me, Mike's been working with me on some of this, Steve, you probably have some things to add to that.
Well, I'll listen out. I did, I did on property A, we've talked about doing some trading with the Economic Development Corporation, and then you'll see the darker part, it's got a little red, red line coming through here, the, the western part, that actually belongs to the Economic Development Corporation. But they seem very reasonable in dealing with us, uh, you know, trying to figure out what's best for both organizations, I guess, right now. But like Jerry said, you notice there's a gap between A and the highway, and that is stayed right away, and, you know, and to get to it, you have to cross it, of course, we can get an entrance there, but they're telling us eventually that's gonna be a service road. Whether or not to extend it through their buildings there, you see, uh, it's right next to A there, we don't know. But if they take that service road down out to Fair Road, which is on the east, they're gonna be taking part in our property, which is already limited at the corner of Fair Road and one seventy-five property. So we don't know that, there is a road that they have planned, you see on the west side, that little, that darkest area, will be tracked to A, down here on the bottom. That is a thoroughfare that connects one seventy-five to another, uh, county road right now, but they intend to widen that one. Uh, problem is, uh, you know, you can't probably, the, the service road stops jail, or at the county courthouse. And, um, right now, if they extend it, it's just gonna be going to the, you gotta make a right turn. Um, or, you know, to, to get, if there was a service road there. This other road, Fair Road, is, they also have plans eventually to widen that. Uh, eventually, on a road that goes from here, it ties into thirty-four, which, uh, goes up to Kaufman to Terrell, behind the jail. Lot of question.
There's a lot of question, and there's a lot of balls being juggled up, and we just need, we need Corey and his help in ter- assistance in terms of engineering and, uh, uh, correspondence with the other entities, and we also need to continue working with the land planner. Cause he's helped us tremendously, so we're, we're, um, the Kaufman Economic Development Corporation, if you look at D on the map, D is in David, that's basically what they want to, they want to have for future development. And if you look at B down at the bottom, or A up at the top, or some, some, uh, something related to those, one of those would go, would stay with TBCC for future growth, and the other one would, for future building, and the other one would probably be purchased by Kaufman Independent School District. So what we would, would like to be able to do is, we would like to be able to, to have approval, to hire Corey for interest, and for interest engineering, to do the cost analysis for us on A and B, and, uh, continue working to see, uh, with the other entities to see what the best future use of that property may be. And again, I see it's forty-six thousand. Again, I can't commit to you tonight, but I could tell you that, um, I could tell you that it was brought up by the, the, uh, the, uh, the foundation individuals themselves, that this is what they would like for us to do, and this is something that they would pay for, we just haven't been confirmed on that. Now, that's a lot of information out there. And I wish we could have good answers for everybody. Corey, why don't you, you have some things you want to add to that, you've been kind of studying this and evaluating as well, we've been with Corey a couple of times as well.
Thank you, Dr. King. Yes, uh, board, we've met onsite with Tony and David, both, and we walked the property, and we looked at what the existing utilities are on site, and brainstormed also what Tech Dot's gonna do, and coordinating with them, and figuring out what their long-term policies can be for all that. And, and I'll be upfront with you, it's gonna take some time to get those answers from them. A lot of answers can be determined in the short term, to come back and do it someday soon. Some of those are gonna be kind of loose until we get them, and that's gonna take some time. Um, we did include the surveying on both tracks. You know, I would at first, if we're, I wouldn't survey TBCC, uh, or the EDC track yet. Didn't do anything until we knew exactly the length of the swath from that curve, so I would back that cost out of right now. I would go ahead and probably survey your track, your track probably might have to be surveyed at some point anyways, go ahead and get that done over with, and then replating or surveying adjacent track when we come later. I just wouldn't spend that money right now for a big deal. Cause the scope may change once we figure out pros and cons for each one, you may not do that, so there's no reason to spend any money up front for that.
Dr. King, what, what I'm trying to, trying to understand, of course, that is certainly out there, but we need to do that. And while reaching the point, uh, this has to be parceled, and obviously those, I mean, you know, I guess I'll need to survey that same battery all over again, if you already have that baseline in there. But, uh, D S may, it all needs to be, they may be hard time following on all of these other, uh, related costs with every parcel. Which we're not gonna build on every parcel. So why, why do we need to plan, uh, preliminary engineer, develop architecture, construction oversight estimates, et cetera, et cetera, for every single one of these parcels?
That's a good question, and it's not every single one, it's only A and B. And basically, what we're trying to do is determine which one of those two parcels would be the best property for TBCC to build a building on in the future. And so all we're doing is trying to evaluate which, that's, those two pieces of property along Highway one seventy-five, we're trying to determine which one of those would be best use for TBCC, which is what you guys asked me to do about four or five months ago, yeah. So that's the whole purpose of it.
But I'm seeing, and, uh, you know, frankly, and use what you just said, I'm misreading, but I'm seeing the, uh, total south side, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, including all that I just outlined.
That's, that would be parcel B.
And now I look to the very next page, and I see the same things, pretty much identically described, and that's gonna be thirty-five.
That's right, that's for parcel A, so we're evaluating parcel A versus parcel B, and we're let, gonna let them tell us which one of those two parcels would be the best to, to build, or not to keep.
But to the extent of structural engineering estimates, or geotechnical building estimates, I guess that might be valid. Construction oversight, architecture, et cetera. Corey, I mean, how far do you need to go to say, I wanna build a house from here, or I wanna build on this line?
Well, that's a good question, and that's exactly what we're trying to determine.
I know.
Yeah.
So that, you know, again, that's, that adds up to a lot of money for for the part that you're not gonna, not gonna keep anymore.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
I'd like to add a couple of things, man. If you look at these sides, uh, if, if you, if you're familiar with that, this location where the jail and, and the offices are, that's next door to the track A. And that's the highest point of the property, which has got the best visibility. If we can combine with the Economic Development Group, that's got the highest visibility from the road. And the thought was, if we were gonna quit the time and effort in doing this, we'd like a build, a location that would serve our needs, and also give Shoreton Valley a presence there that's, that you can see and adjust it. If you take it all the way down to track B, uh, down there on Fair Road, it narrows down to me, it's probably the easier track to develop, just looking at it. But it also, it's got some issues because it's, it's smaller down its road when it comes to neck. We don't know, again, what Tech Dot's gonna do up there at the road, so if they come through and take, take a service road, pass Fair Road, or what they're gonna do, then they may actually be taking part in track B away. We're trying to figure out a couple of different things, what's the most economical place to build, and what would be the best to meet the goals of the college. I think you need to know a little bit about the cost on both sides to be able to determine which one is financially feasible or not. Uh, I think it's gonna be a challenge for both of these because of the, the road structure issues. The county has said that they're gonna, uh, and the state, the county is intended in, in the city of Kaufman to run this road, which is to the west of track D, you see on your draw on the screen there. Uh, that road will go all the way to Fair Road, and then that road will connect back to thirty-four. Uh, the interior roads would kind of allow us access to the thoroughfares, but it's hard to say, I know what you're saying, David. It seems excessive to pay somebody to figure all that out. But like Dr. Charlie said, when we first started this journey, he said, we need to have somebody help us, that can tell us what the costs are before we jump off in. So it may not work, I personally, I'm not, I'm not, I'm very sympathetic to Mr. White, and we'd like to see this there. And I'm no expert, I'm just saying, I'm not satisfied, and this may be the best set or not, I don't know. I think you take what Corey's gonna give us, and give us some rough information, we're not doing detailed plans or anything, but I, how much dirt are we gonna move, what's the cost to get utilities and coal spots, there's a lot of questions there that, you know, you, you, you might say, I've, I've been, I've been in favor of this west track all along, just because I like to be a, a, a lot on, on the hill instead of down there. You get behind those buildings down there, if the state doesn't take them out, nobody's gonna see us traveling east till they pass, they gotta turn around.
Well, let me say this, he has gone around, I respect that, and certainly I know, you know, your history and involvement with, with my support, wealth-related property, so keep that in mind, I favor following that approach. But, but if, if you, you have a conviction that, that you're, you don't want B anyway, because you're gonna be hidden, then let's not spend the money on B to study what, what you're not gonna be happy with anyhow.
You can't, you don't know that, though, that's the problem.
That's my personal opinion, I've expressed that to the planner, but there are some things that, that makes me miss about B, uh.
Let me just say this, B, you already, you already have access on B, there's a possibility, you may never have access on A. You may not can get on A on one seventy-five or the other, there are just so many unvariables out there. I wish that we could tell you, if we could, we would. My, my thoughts have been B all along, but I totally agree with, with Steve, that with us being able to, to, uh, trade property with the EDC, A would be better, and A's on the top of the hill.
I don't think we can conclude that at this point, I actually have a proper discussion, you know, it's, it's, that, that, or could there be at this point, any free trade thing?
There's not, we're, Steve, you wanna, you wanna talk about that?
While they were meeting, we've been into Stewart, the Economic Development Director, Kaufman's been there, and he's expressed, he's had conversations with his board. Uh, and they seem, we're, we're in a very early stage, preliminary stage, of seeing what might work or might not work, which, you know, I think any site you have, you're gonna have the same questions as we're asking here. We're trying to find out what is, what's the most feasible site to use, what works best for the college. Uh, and Corey, I may be wrong, but looking at track one, it looks like there's a lot more dirt work, I mean, track A, a lot more dirt work involved on that one than perhaps B. Uh, and, um, I, I feel like the basics, I mean, I'd rather spend, particularly, if we're fortunate enough, and that, that Mar, uh, Foundation will pay for this. It, this, the information we're trying to glean is something that we're gonna need to know, and we'd like to know it before we get off into it, and then make a bad decision. Uh, I think the money we're spending to find out, yeah, it's real money, but things like this cost, and how else are we gonna know other than just saying, well, I've been around, and, and I think this is the best site, and I, I, we're trying to go about it before we know the cost going in to get the site ready, and then to look at the pitfalls, if, which, with, whichever site we have, and to me, the Tech Dot is the biggest pitfall, because you don't know what they're gonna do, and Corey, they may be able to give us some answers somewhat, but they're not, in a matter of months, two or three months, I basically won't give you anything we need to know about. Uh, now, now, I do think we have a friend in the county, and, uh, with the county and the city, uh, it would be, it would be good if we could get a commitment of what they're gonna do with that strip between A and the road, and how they would run the, uh, service road up through there, and how that could connect, that, that would be brain-deep, from Highway thirty-first or to our property, much like you have at Terrell, within that access there on that, but, but on the, but you have to, to exit, uh, if you're, if you can get out going to the west, to the east, which, to go out west, you'd either have to go back down the road to plan the bill, or hit the internal road and go over to Fair Road somewhere. And that's gonna cost money to do that, so that, that's, that's fine, you kind of gotta weigh those things. All, we're trying to do is get a preliminary view of this track and see which one works best. We, I'd rather spend forty thousand dollars if you're gonna, I'm gonna work, we need to find a better site, and spend the money, than not spend the money to get into it, and then our cost would be four hundred thousand dollars. I agree, I mean, that, that's, that's the whole reason, I, I, you know, so I, I mean, I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm personally not sold on the site now, we got into all this because of timing issues, and we wanna do something up there. But, you know, in all fairness, we do own the land, and, you know, we'd like something that's visible, and this is on the biggest thoroughfare we have up there, I mean, I mean, you know, this highway, Dallas Highway is, I think, the place to be, whether it's here or somewhere else personally, but, uh, it's, there's a lot going on with this, and if we just keep working it and seeing what you have, we'll, we'll have an answer. I think we need some things we can't just decide, sit at a table, talk about.
Dr. Clayton, you have a thought on it?
Yeah, w- w- well, why can't we wait for a commitment on this foundation money before we make this decision?
We can do that, if you would like to, I, I think, I think, I, I would love to be able to tell you it's a given, cause it probably is a given. We're just waiting to hear back from them. We're just waiting to hear back from them. They're the ones who brought it up, not me. They said, can we help you pay for this? And I said, sure.
Well, may I make a suggestion? Why don't we just go ahead and do the survey of our property? That we, that we already have, because we need to do that anyway.
Okay, we do. And then make the rest of it contingent upon?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay, I think that's, that would be, that would be fine.
And how soon will they have that?
I think, I thought it was today. I honestly did, I kept waiting today, but it wasn't. So I think it will be tomorrow that, well, I'll hear something. And I'm, again, I'm ninety-nine percent sure they're gonna do it. It's just that I can't tell you that, that they have committed a hundred percent yet. I think that would be great. Would you, would you then be willing to say that if they are willing to pay for that, that we could go ahead and go, go, go forward with it? If not, then we wait till next month?
I see no reason not to.
Okay. I think that'd be great.
They know your costs.
This is what I said to them. I said this to them, I got this from Cory last Monday, and I sent this to them on Tuesday. And they had, we heard back off to them on Wednesday and they asked the same question that David asked. Why are you doing two different, same question?
I agree with the discussion. I get it. But, you know, I wasn't thinking hard.
Yeah. And so I, I was in Utah when I got, when I got the email back from them and I sent them an email back on Wednesday night, late Wednesday night. The reasons that I explained to you, the reasons why we're doing it, I suspect they're gonna do the whole thing. But they did ask the question and I'm waiting to hear back from them. So that's kind of where we are. So if we could have a motion to approve the survey, go ahead and do that, and that would be six thousand three hundred dollars in that ballpark. And then we could make the rest of it contingent upon us hearing from the Mar Foundation. And I probably could talk to the Mar Foundation about taking out the EDC track survey as well. Right, Cory? Fifty-eight hundred? Wait on that one?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I would like to do.
Well, if they're willing to pay for it and we're using it in our plans, why don't we go for the whole deal?
You guys are the one talking about the money part of it. I'm.
Well, it's not our money.
I totally agree. That's what I've been saying all along. It's not our money.
I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but I mean, if they're willing to do it, we might as well get a full perspective because if we are able, successful to do this, we're gonna make, track A's gonna have to be dealing with the Economic Development Track.
Yeah. Well, I think, yeah, what I did was I said this to them and I said, this is the total cost. And part of it is now, part of it's later on down the road. I think the replat would be later on down the road. So I just said this to them and said, this is the total cost. And then they sent me an email back saying, why are you doing two different areas? And I explained to them why, and I think I'll get a positive result back from them. And if I do, I'll be happy to do the whole thing. Does that sound like a plan?
Yes.
So what we need is a motion to approve the track, approve the, the TBCC survey. I guess it would be entire TBCC track survey. And then we need a motion that if the, the foundation approves the total amount, that we move forward with that as well.
As presented.
As presented, yeah. Be good.
So we need two motions?
No, we just need one.
Just need one, okay.
We only need one motion. We need a motion to approve the, the survey and, and part of that motion will be if the foundation, Mar Foundation approves the, the funding, that we move forward with that as well.
Okay, so, so moved.
Okay.
You'll make that motion?
I made that motion.
Oh, you made that motion? Okay.
He did.
So. You, anyone want to second it? David seconds the motion. Any?
Thank you, guys.
Just a discussion, the way I mentioned, can be careful. You know, I'm hearing reference to EDC track, et cetera, and I get it, those of you that talk quite a bit, and then there's mention of Kaufman ISD. Honestly, I'll be tickled here that, that all of the property is wound up in the hands that ultimately will produce the best benefit of TBCC and everyone else inside. So this is, there's not a reflection. But I would say that it's a strong conviction at this point, any, any suggestion of what's the, where the pre-trade remaining property for EDC or ISD or any conversations wanting in that direction could be highly inappropriate. So I, I don't think that we should do that. We're asking for a study to help us decide what the best use of that property is. If we come back and say the best use, build this campus here for a workforce center and to do exactly what the EDC wants and the ISD wants, I'm all for it. But, but I, I think that's a decision for the board to consider and pay after all the facts have been presented, you know, at that point in time. So I'm just encouraging.
Can I, can I, can I further explain? If you look at track A, that is part of EDC.
I don't know. I mean, I'm just referring to the EDC.
I mean, if we're going to look at this in this, in this way we're looking at it, part track A, the, the, the darkened part of that is EDC property, not TBCC. The only TBCC property in part A is on the right-hand side of that. And so looking at this from this standpoint, we are looking at it as a partnership with EDC and TBCC to make up track A, which was, which was the land planner's recommendation all along.
David, we're not presenting this if our boards already earmarked this thing. We're looking for options of how we can utilize this in the most efficient way for the college purser. And the reason we went to that location, if you'll notice on that west boundary, that black arrow, that road is going in, it's a new road that they, I think the county's doing that, aren't they? I think the county's doing.
I think so. I think it's a bond, county.
And that will connect, coming out of the courthouse, it'll give another way to get out to 175. And then if you go to the west, you'll hit that road running north and south, whatever that other black areas there on that west line. And you can, you'd have your option of going back to Kaufman or you could hit 34 and go to Ennis or Farrel. That's what that does. And so we, we were just kicking this around, this is just one idea. Can we do this without, without EDC or the school district? Sure. But after meeting three times with the planner, he recommends we look at it like this. And the Economic Development people are saying, I'd like, we'd like to see it too. But they're giving up all their frontage on 175, looking at this, if they, if they're not, we're looking, maybe doing some trading back here at the back perhaps at some point. We're just trying to find the best site to put a building. Right now, you know, we could put it on all of our property, but you kind of get below the crest of the hill. And these are recommendations from the Kimberley Horns people that said, said around the office at Kaufman, said it's a pretty good.
Well, again, no objection to trading or involving EDC, period. If it marks to achieve the goal of college, but we just all need to understand and to see that document for anyone that moves forward, and just for the ISD, same thing. If it makes sense, then let's, let's all gather and consider it.
Okay.
All right, we have vote, motion floor. Do I hear a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All polls like sign, motion carries. Item number fourteen, consider and discuss the board member's training requirements report, education code sixty-one point one zero eight four.
Congratulations to all the board members. You have done your training for the year. We just need approval of that.
Okay.
Completed training.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Mike makes the motion. Dr. Terry seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All polls like sign, motion carries. Item number fifteen, consider and discuss personnel matters.
These are again, your standard resignations, terminations, retirements, and then new hires. The new hires, there are two new, new hires with positions that have been approved by the board. And then on the last page, those are new adjusted promotions, basically division chairs and other types of promotions that have been made during the last month.
So we need the motion to approve the personnel matters.
Right.
All right. Jerry Stone makes that motion. Steve second's that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All polls like sign, motion carries. Do I hear a motion? We adjourn. David makes the motion, we adjourn. Do I hear a second? Steve. Dr. Terry's second's the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All polls like sign, motion carries. Good night, you all. Have a safe trip home.